Actually, let me just make sure that our Zoom is on. Yes, just want to double check our Zoom. You guys all can see that correctly? Yes, okay. We are in Zoom, so we will be taking public comment at the beginning of the meeting on items not listed on the agenda, as well as items listed on the agenda during those specific items that are called up. Those in person will be asked to talk first, and then we'll go on to Zoom. You'll be given three minutes. And if you are dialing by telephone this evening, you'll need to push six to raise and unraise your hand, and nine to mute and unmute. We did have some correspondence that Doug did write to the Planning Commission and send. It is also posted on our website on the agenda. Just a reminder to speak clearly into your mics as we have recording and public listening to this meeting. And I will turn it back over to Chair Gossett to start the meeting.
Thank you. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, would you go through roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Johannes is absent this evening and not participating as a Planning Commissioner. Commissioner Riddick.
I'm present.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Commissioner Gorn.
I'm here.
And Chair Gossett.
Here.
We have four Planning Commissioners present this evening.
And we will now go through the approval of the minutes for both February 13, 2024, and March 12, 2024.
So we have any comments, motion? Commissioner Riddick was absent at that meeting, so he'll abstain.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 13, 2024.
Do a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Motion approved. We have the 3:12 minutes. That was 2:13, right?
Yeah. 3:12.
Which was the last meeting. We had no, Commissioner Gorn was not present.
I'll move, we approve those minutes.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
At this time, I'll invite anyone from the public to speak out about any item that's not on the agenda.
Let me just check the Zoom. I have no one in person, but let me just check ours. I see no one raising their hands.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing for items not on the agenda, and we will look at Project 1A. The project description is the coastal development permit for the Caltrans state Route 1 multi-asset roadway rehabilitation project, city file PDP 23-084.
Doug, your mic?
I think you're on.
For the record, I'm Doug Garrison, project planner. This is a little bit larger project that extends from Half Moon Bay at the south to Wavecrest Road up to, well into the county, up to around Moss Beach, actually. Because we're in the coastal zone, there are two jurisdictions with authority. San Mateo County's issued a coastal development permit for the portion of this project that's in their area, and we're now considering a CDP for the portion in ours. I would note, this gets a little confusing when you go through the application materials, because when they evaluate the project, like for CEQA, for environmental review, they treat it as one big project, which is the proper way to do it, to get all of the impacts. But you'll be reading through that, and it'll say, we're going to be filling in wetlands, but that's not here. So it gets a little confusing. It's essentially, it's a maintenance project, it's basically a repaving project to rejuvenate Highway 1, to get it to last longer, have better experience. And there are a lot of safety equipment that are outdated or worn out, so they'll be replacing guardrails, some of the traffic signals and poles, that sort of thing. There will be some traffic management equipment, I believe there's some cameras, some utility boxes, that sort of thing, to run all the equipment. Just to be clear, there's no permanent electronic reader boards proposed this time. There are some pedestrian bicycle improvements included, and they will be replacing three existing culverts. Those are in the southern part of town, down by Grove and Filbert. They will be repaving the Naomi Patrick's Trail, as well as the highway. There will be some minor pedestrian improvements, new curb cuts, ADA ramps, some improvements around the existing bus stops in the right-of-way. They are also adding bicycle lanes to the highway, proposed at 6 feet wide on both sides for, I believe, the length of the project in Half Moon Bay. So it does require a coastal development permit. Environmental review is a little bit different, because Caltrans is a state agency, so they're the lead agency for environmental review. They've prepared their CEQA document, also a National Environmental Policy Act document. Our role, we're what's called a responsible agency. Our authority is a little more limited than what we're used to with a lot of our projects, but we are required to review those environmental documents and include those in the consideration of the CDP tonight. Some of the key issues here are similar to what we always go through, the land use plan and zoning conformance. In my mind, quality of life, traffic noise, lights are really central issues on this project. And I apologize, we didn't take a real deep dive into that in the staff report. Due to some circumstances out of my control, I worked on it and then took a staycation in the hospital and handed it off to somebody else, and then they handed it back to me. But I will get into that during the presentation here. Because it's basically repaving, we don't have a lot of visual effects. They're not actually proposing to do work in Esha. There are areas where the highway passes through Esha, like the bridge over Pilositos Creek, near some of the riparian areas along the highway, but they're not actually proposing to go into those areas and do work. And again, that's where some of the applications get a little bit confusing, because they discuss doing that kind of work, but it's not here in Half Moon Bay. So what's central in my mind is quality of life. This is a project that could take one to two years to complete. During that period, there will be lane closures, detours, you know, those are kind of red-button issues here. And we have a land use plan policy that requires a coastal access plan when you're doing work on the highway, or work that could affect access to coastal areas. And it goes a little bit beyond what you would get in most standard traffic management plans you'd see from Caltrans. This one, you really do have to get into looking at when the peak traffic periods are, how to avoid those, and here, we have a lot of those. It's also, it's a condition of approval on the CDP, so the city does get to review and approve that plan before it goes into effect. And so we will be working with Caltrans, not only upfront, but we anticipate having weekly updates during construction as the project moves along, so that we can fine-tune it, work with the contractor, the other agencies, make sure the neighbors that are going to be disturbed this month will know about it with a little bit of notice. And one of the things, as I think this through, is when you start trying to avoid AM and PM peak hour, holiday weekends, you don't have a lot of hours in the day to really get much work done, as far as, you know, a solid eight or 10-hour stretch when you can lay asphalt and do things. And so the best solution is probably night work. Caltrans does a lot of that. They've stated that they would like to do night work on this project. It gets you into an interesting sort of, which is the greater of the evils. You're not stuck in traffic, but you might be kept awake for a few nights if you live real close to the highway. And so that is something I think we'd like some input from the Planning Commission tonight. I apologize for springing it on you at the last minute here. And as I think it through, there are some areas that are more commercial or agricultural, where I don't think noise, lights really going to be an issue. There are some select areas where we get into housing, where we may have to tweak that plan a little bit, and maybe some of it gets done in the day and some of it at night. That's something to think about. So that's one thing I said, I apologize for springing it on you. With that, I think it's kind of the critical issue in this project, in my mind, given the length of time that it's going to go on, and I know there's still, you know, the Highway 92 repairs are still fresh in everybody's mind, so it's something to deal with. I would just add that we had very extensive noticing on this. We sent out close to 2,000 notices to people on our email list, as well as posting notices around town in areas where people congregate, as well as publishing an ad in the newspaper. We did get a number of comments after the staff report was released, and to the extent we could respond in writing, we've done so, and that's the memo with the attachments you received today. And the comments all sort of fall into a few categories. A lot of people were confused by certain things. There were questions about the scope of the project, why does it stop at Wavecrest Avenue and not go further south to include Redondo Beach Road? The short answer is, Caltrans developed this project, it's their scope of work, our job is to evaluate that scope, and we can require changes to the project. I don't know that we can really say you need to, you know, double the size of your project. It's like if somebody was building a two-story building, we could tell them you have to change the materials and this and that, but we probably couldn't tell them you need to make your house twice as big as you're proposing. So we concur that getting the work done all the way through Half Moon Bay would be great. We're in discussions with Caltrans about that, but it's something we don't have a huge amount of control over tonight. There was some confusion about the new bike lanes from the plans, it's difficult to see where they are. If you look at the sheets that are titled cross-sections, typical cross-sections, it shows the profile, where is a 12-foot-wide traffic lane, a two-foot buffer, and then a six-foot-wide bicycle lane. But my understanding is, they will extend basically the entire length of the project on both sides of the road. Caltrans can confirm or correct me, they're online, they can respond to questions as we get going. There were, a common thread was about the Kelly Avenue intersection, concerns about pedestrian safety there with, you have the right-turn lanes that you have to get across before you can get to the pedestrian signal box, and then you're sort of stuck on this small island with traffic going by in all directions. And then effects on how the project could affect stormwater runoff. So this is just why it ends at Wavecrest. Caltrans may be able to respond in more detail to those kind of questions. They did send in this graphic with color, which makes it easier to see what they are going to do at Kelly Avenue. And the bright yellow, those would be new crosswalks, they're in a Caltrans bright-yellow coloring. They would be adding a new yield-to-pedestrian sign here, right where the right-turn lane starts going northbound. They would be reconstructing these little, sometimes they're called the pork chop islands there, to make them a little bit taller, brighter colors, a little more visible. Some of the comments were, you ought to just get rid of that northbound right-turn lane and push the curb out, so that people don't have to cross all of those lanes. Some people wanted another crosswalk going the north side of the intersection, some people thought that was a bad idea. Where, we had a meeting actually yesterday afternoon with Caltrans, I was there, Maz was there to go over this, and we've raised some other options that are, the basic Caltrans response to changing the intersection, in their written response, was it's outside the scope of the maintenance project, so we're, no. We've suggested a few things that could help with visibility, and hopefully getting people to not do a rolling right turn through that first crosswalk, something to make it more visible, get their attention. Those could be things like, you know, if you move the pedestrian, the button you push over to the main curb, and then you could get, when somebody pushes that, you could get a no-right turn, red arrow, or putting in some flashing lights, or even further up into that turn lane, maybe some, you know, those metal domes that just get people's attention when they drive over them. It takes a couple of different Caltrans departments to approve those things, so we don't have an answer, but we are in discussions. Again, the bike lanes, hard to read on the plans, but this is my understanding of it. Stormwater got a little more complicated. They are proposing to replace three existing culverts that are, they're a little bit on the southern end, they're down by Grove Street, Filbert. So none of these drain into the problematic drainages that we're dealing with, like Kehoe, Pullman, Roosevelt, Seymour. I've gone out to these locations and looked at them, I have a couple of photos. They all drain into, it's a pretty wide, grassy area, rooteril, you know, grass. In the Caltrans right-of-way, it's pretty level, there's no real sign of erosion, downcutting, or off-site impacts from there. They're not increasing the size of the culverts, they are doing some work in one of the informal drainage ditches that runs parallel to the highway on the east side. And they have received complaints from the neighbors there that sometimes the water backs up trying to get through the culvert, and it actually floods onto their properties, that's part of the reason for that. What they're proposing is pretty minimal work. Again, it's mostly rooteril vegetation, they would muck out some of the silt in there, leave it with one-to-one slope banks, fairly shallow, a foot or so, and then reseed the whole thing with, you know, appropriate vegetation. Other than that, they're not proposing any work in any drainages. And, you know, one of the questions was, if you build those bicycle lanes and you have to widen the road a little bit to get the bicycle lane plus the two-foot buffer, and that will increase some impermeable area. Talking with Caltrans, they said it could increase by .18 acre, which is 7,000 or 8,000 square feet, the size of a couple of medium-sized lots in town. I'm not sure if that was for the entire project, including in the county, or just here, we can get clarification on them. But it would be pretty minor work, their hydrologists have looked at it, and they're comfortable that it would not alter drainage flows. At this point, I don't think we've actually had, our engineers haven't explored any of their, you know, analytical work on that in detail. So here's a couple of photos. You can see this close-up, the culvert's pretty well silted in, there's not, you know, only about half the capacity seems to be open. So just mucking it out would increase the flow, but if you look on the photo to the right, you can see, it's pretty flat there, the sort of the informal ditch where it discharges isn't really much more than a foot or so deep, and it just kind of stops in the middle of that big grassy field. It doesn't discharge directly into the adjacent streets or any other channels. So we think these should be pretty safe, we're not anticipating complications from those. I forget exactly, but I think it was over by Grove Street. If you look on the plans, it's in the sheet labeled Drainage Plan Towards the End. And there's three of them that are... Yeah, one is just south of Grove. Yeah, one is just south of Grove. It basically comes out at the Grove intersection. Just barely south of Filbert, and then another one, I think that's Magnolia, the street that dead-ends there. And it was, I think this might have been Magnolia. I don't have my field notes in front of me. But they were all pretty similar. I took photos of all of them. So that's the basic presentation, staff's recommending approval of the permit. As I said, Caltrans has representatives on Zoom that are available to answer questions that I'm not able to, and I'm available for any questions from the commission or public.
Thank you, Doug. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing for this item, and I see that Jimmy Benjamin would like to speak.
Am I on? So good evening, funding commission staff. It's very nice to see all of you here, and I'm very glad that Doug is feeling better. My name is Jimmy Benjamin. I live at 400 Pillar Citos Avenue in Half Moon Bay. I do not oppose the maintenance of Highway One, and I certainly do not oppose the establishment of bike lanes. What concerns me are the side effects that haven't been adequately considered in this project. The boundaries of the Sequaneeba Study are what they are, for the purposes they had. You have a different purpose. You're here to determine consistency with our local coastal program, and you have the authority to ask questions about impacts that were not addressed in their study. I found that I had questions like that, and my concerns are reflected in the letters that I wrote to you earlier this week. The staff report came out, I think, on Thursday, and I tried to get my letter in as quickly as possible. So I apologize for the short notice you had. I know that Doug has got a lot of juggling and Steve has a lot going on, so nobody's fault here. I, my biggest concern is that it feels like there's a train that is getting ready to leave the station, and I am asking you, as the station keeper, to stop the music until the questions that you may have, if you agree with the questions that I have, have been answered. A fraction of an acre of square footage times a distance vertically in a swale over thousands and thousands of feet, that constitutes acre-feet of water during a rainstorm. And the fact that there may not be a physical change in the cross-sectional area of a culvert does not mean that more water will not be ejected into a sensitive habitat, a riparian corridor or water cor. I included some videos. I don't know if Bridget is able to play it, but there, the one marked, yeah, that's the swale going under the Highway One service road at the Kehoe Water Course. And as you can see, there's headroom for more water to flow there. So not increasing the size of the culvert doesn't mean when it rains more and there's less water being retained by the swale, that more water isn't going to go through that pipe and come out the other side. And if Bridget could show the, I think it was three of three of that. That was in 2017. That's the one. This is the water coming out the other side of that reinforced concrete box. That is a heck of a lot of water in an unvegetated swale with poorly consolidated soil. And it is in a water course that when the city considered having a channel there was about one or two feet across and a foot or, two or three feet deep, or maybe I've got those dimensions reversed, which is the cautionary tale when you look at that section at Grove that Doug put up, it's about the size that that was. The Kehoe Water Course in 2005 was about 20 feet bank-to-bank. In 2022, before our big rainstorms, the surveys that have been done, one by the city and one by my geomorphologist, have confirmed that that is now 30 feet across. So erosion happens. Erosion is not a problem until it is. And as planning commissioners, as planning staff, your job is to plan for the future and see the conditions that are going to exist 20 years from now, and the problems that the Kehoe Water Course and the Pullman Water Course, which you have looked at in the past, are going to happen again. The problem is not that there's inadequate pipe. The problem is that there's too much water. And I sympathize with the folks who live on the east side of Highway One. I noted that a neighbor near Grandview Boulevard was anxious to see increased drainage. But drainage in planning is not a zero-sum game. It's not about whether you can move the water to me or I can keep you, force the water to stay with you. It's about finding places where the water can be responsibly managed. And this project's changes in the amount of swale area needs to be addressed in that light. To simply wave your hands and say, "We don't think there's an impact," is an opinion, and I don't care what the license is on the person who says it. They need evidence, quantified evidence. And if you don't have that evidence, you do not have a basis for making findings of consistency. That is the fundamental germ of my concern. I do not want to stop this project. I want the city to have sustainable streets. I want them to have bicycle trails. But the typical bicycle trail that Doug described isn't, you know, if you look at the sheet, it's not clear where that's going to require widening. And the truth is that even if it happens north of Spandrift, that area drains into the Kehoe Water Course. I included pictures in my documents for you showing some water courses that the Caltrans analysis did not include. One is a culvert that goes under Spandrift, that connects, hydrologically connects the area north where there are substantial swales to the Kehoe Water Course. That's not reflected in the city's Phase One Storm Drainage Plan. I hope that the picture that I gave you will constitute a fact that you can accept and ask for an update in that document and the local coastal program. There's also a swale passing under Highway One just north of Grandview. That's not part of their analysis either. The cumulative impact of that water that ultimately drains into the Kehoe and Pullman and Roosevelt and Seymour are substantial, and we cannot turn a blind eye to them anymore. We cannot afford to turn a blind eye to them anymore. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Bridget, do we have anyone online that would like to speak out?
I have no one raising their hand online.
Okay. At this point, I would like to ask my fellow commissioners if you have any clarifying questions.
Doug, just for the record, could you tell us what timing Caltrans imagines for the start of this project?
They can probably do a better job, but my understanding is, what I read in the application materials was they would like to start construction in 2025, and that the entire project could take up to two years, although it would be in sections. It wouldn't affect the entire length at the same time. And the, some of the work, like replacing guardrails, could be done without shutting down lanes of the highway, working from the shoulder. So it's, I hope that's a good enough answer.
Is Caltrans planning on presenting to us, or they'd be here to answer questions?
They are not going to give a presentation. They are available to answer questions.
If you still have public comment open, I can, I have someone who, I guess, is trying to raise their hand but not having trouble, so.
Okay, please, yes.
Okay.
Am I open now?
Yes, you are. You can speak.
Thank you, thank you. And I wanted to speak tonight. My name is Paul Nagengas, and I sent in several emails to the city, which they did forward to Caltrans, and I actually appreciate Caltrans' response and the city's sending, requesting Caltrans' response. It's the fastest I've ever had a response from Caltrans. I guess note to self, submit something as a community member as opposed to city engineer. But I had broken my comments into two separate items. One was general, and Caltrans satisfactory answered all of that, and I'm confident Maz and the city engineering team can work and work with Caltrans on those general comments that I had. The more specific ones related to safety, and which was brought up about the intersection that, you know, my big safety concern is, always will be Highway One and Kelly. And what's happened, morphed over the years, I know there's also the need for a sidewalk along the southern approach there from, really Pillar Citos Creek to Kelly, but it really should go all the way to the Highway 92 and some type to encourage pedestrians to use that as opposed to go across. I understand the response from Caltrans, the type of funds. This is why Caltrans cannot do it at this time, is to utilize existing improvements, which I also, Maz, thank you for working to try and make the existing intersection more visible, and I would hope that's still just a stopgap in safety, that what I also heard Caltrans, they would fully support any application the city makes to the Transit Authority and CCAG for improvements that cannot be in what community, I think the Bicycle, Pedestrian Bicycle Committee at Half Moon Bay has also had concerns about, you know, the ability to do some at this intersection, that we could have a project submitted to the TA and partner with Caltrans for that work. And again, even if it goes on to Redondo Beach Road, I think those are very worthy. So I thank you for allowing me to stay in the public process. I don't know why it wasn't, the button wasn't working. But I just wanted to say, I know I, as the past city engineer, you know, I know a little bit about something. I don't know everything, of course not. But I do appreciate the, my concerns were addressed, and I would hope that the improvements at the intersection, Kelly One and sidewalk, and whatever determines to keep folks from running across the highway there can be done as a future project with the TA. Again, thank you so much again.
Thank you, Paul. Bridget, do you believe anyone else would like to speak out online?
Yes, I do. Hazel Johannis would like to speak, and I'm not sure what is going on with the hand raising. I could go down the line and we can ask each person, I think is what we're going to have to do. I'm really not sure what's going on. I'm looking at my settings and they all look right, so, and the link hasn't changed. So let me let Hazel speak, and then we can let everybody else.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead. Hazel Johannis, you can speak.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to echo Jimmy Benjamin's comments. I would like the city to incorporate the stormwater master plan information that the city is getting with what Caltrans is analyzing for their hydraulics analysis. So that's one comment. The other comment I have is the LUP mentions that the second segment, the second primary segment for the city is from the Highway 92 all the way to Miramontes Point Road. I'm wondering why there's an inconsistency in what the city has as far as its primary segments and why Caltrans has decided or has developed a plan to stop its construction or its rehabilitation at Wave and not continue it all the way to Miramontes Point. In that way, we would have a continuous segment of improvements along what the city's LUP actually states, and that is actually in Chapter Three of the LUP. So that is a consistency issue that I'd like to have perhaps the Caltrans folks analyze and look at. I also want to make sure that the Caltrans improvements and/or rehab project includes some kind of access from the Coast House all the way to Kelly or all the way to Safeway. I know it's outside, they say it's outside their scope, but there is a danger. I've seen many folks from the Coast House trying to cross the highway and get to shoreline and vice versa. So I wonder if there's some kind of improvements or considerations that Caltrans can make to prevent these dangerous crossings across the highway and perhaps find a way to manage that pedestrian traffic towards a safe crossing. I don't know if they plan on putting in a trail from the Coast House all the way to Kelly. That would be helpful and be safe. So thank you very much for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Through the chair, and that was Commissioner Johannis speaking on her own behalf. She couldn't join us tonight, right?
Yes. Yes. For the record, she's public tonight. Yeah, without having, going out of Zoom and going, coming back in, I'm not sure what's going on with the raising of the hand, so we can go down through the public and ask if anyone wants to speak, and then I'll go through Caltrans to see if anyone wants to talk. Does that work for you? Okay, I'm going to ask Catherine Slater-Carter if you wanted to speak. Oh, that's interesting. It's working for you, but it's not working on. I don't know.
Hello. I'm Catherine Slater-Carter.
You don't need to speak if you don't want to, but some things going on with the raising your hand, so I just wanted to allow you the opportunity to if you wanted to, but you don't need to.
No, I want to, and I've been screwing around with Zoom and needing new passwords, and I don't know.
I'm sorry.
The stuff isn't anymore. I want to comment that this is more than just maintenance. It's putting in two significant bike lanes, and that's adding to the highway in several places. My concern, and I'm on the San Mateo County Harbor District, and I am speaking as an individual, is that the maps that I have seen show that visitors serving parking on Highway One near Surfers Beach is going to be gone. And these parking spots are significant parking spots for coastal access for surfers, for locals, for tourists, and they won't have a safe place to park and be able to get to the northernmost Half Moon Bay beaches, right there by Sam's Chowder House and on the beach there. I am going to request that you tell Caltrans that they need to replace these lost parking spaces in a convenient visitor-serving manner rather than losing coastal access to the beaches. People have been parking there, Caltrans says 40 years. Well, I lived in Half Moon Bay 45 years ago, and people were parking along there then. These are, it's a significant coastal access issue, and it has not been addressed in the staff report, but it appears from the map to be a loss of a significant number of parking spaces, and on the, on the county side, too. But anyway, the other is, I agree with the previous speaker, speakers, and... But anyway, the other is, I agree with the previous speaker, speakers, and think that the drainage and the runoff from the highway are critical for keeping the ocean clean, and it needs to be addressed in this maintenance project too. Thank you.
Thank you. Len Erickson, if you would like to speak, you can unmute and speak, giving you the opportunity since it's not working, but you don't have to.
My name is Len Erickson. Yes, thank you. I've also been pressing the raise hand, and it didn't raise.
Our apologies, it's working on some electronics we're finding and not on others, so, thank you. Go ahead, you can speak.
Yeah, so I've been involved in these projects for some time as a citizen member of the midcoast. I've also been on the midcoast community council at other times, but I'm speaking as an individual today. One thing to point upfront, that I was early to recognize that two major businesses in the city of Half Moon Bay, the Beach House Hotel and Sam's, which are in the city, but because of the configuration of the city limits, they're really under the, the highway in front of them is in control of the county and dealt with there, and so they were really not, when the county was going through the process, they were not involved in that process at all. So I closed that communication loop, and basically Sam's Restaurant and the Beach House Hotel likes the Surfers Beach area are experiencing a lot of parking space that will be lost. I have a slide set which I gave to Doug if he wanted to show it, that tried to, do you have a rough count of the amount of parking that is going to be lost by this, which I'd be happy to share with the council if Doug wants to show it. Otherwise, he does have that information. So that's my.
I do not have a slide handy.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't know of anything.
Forty parking spaces between Highway 1 itself and the left and right side, the Caltrans right-of-way, and then the local community services district.
Yeah, I don't know of it.
Is also doing work with parking the services this area as well, and by my estimation, about two-thirds of that parking will go away. The total was 240 spaces, and two-thirds of those will be taken off the map. And it's, I, I'm also a supporter of the bicycle lanes. I've done major tours on Highway 1 up and down the state, but, but it really, in this particular area, was presented as something that would be done with no, no summary option of anything that would mitigate that. So I do have a concern about that. I think your, your planner has indicated that's primarily a, a county issue in our area, but really it's going to affect the entire coast, given that you're talking about Surfers Beach and access to the harbor. Thank you.
Let's go to the next person. The next person in public that I have would be Michelle Dragony, and just let us know if you'd like to talk. You're able to unmute and mute your own self, so.
I'm here, but I don't have anything to say. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for letting us know.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Mike Ferreira. Mike, if you wanted to speak, you can unmute, and if you don't, it's okay.
Thank you, Bridget. And good evening, Chair Gossett. I'm speaking to you from sometimes sunny Montana.
Good for you.
I would like to address not just my comments with the ones of the previous speakers regarding parking, and I didn't look at that section of the plan regarding parking. I do have some experience with that, though, with the Coastal Commission, and if parking is taken away, the Coastal Commission wants to see where are you putting the replacement parking. That's sort of ironclad with them, and it's something to be aware of, and since the city limit, I was always told, is the center of the highway, I think that question may fall to Half Moon Bay and not to the county. In that same general area, I looked at the map, and I wanted to see some notation about what's going to be done about the erosion on the coastal trail, which is also in the city of Half Moon Bay. And I'm sorry to say I didn't see it. I should have been able to find it, but that's a major problem. Half the trail is gone. You have the dunce caps or whatever you want to call them set up there so that people stay away from it, and most people look at that and say the next big storm and a chunk of the highway is gone. That's really pretty major. And if I missed a reference to how that's going to be addressed, I'd be very thankful to hear how. In addition, there is the issue that was brought up by Paul Nagangast, specifically why did it stop at Wavecrest Road? I understand that we can't actually tell Caltrans to take it further, but it is a huge mystery as to why, when the city's conceptual plan approved in Measure A in 2004 contains repairs to all those little streets and in particular Redondo Beach Road, to widen the road so that you could put in turn lanes and turn pockets. Now, 20 years, or as I've said before, 19 and a fraction, is a long time, and so I have to wonder that, I am still curious about why we didn't go there. It could have been cost, and I'd love to hear that explanation, but I'd also like to get an estimate of when that part of the plan will be brought forward to the city. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Okay, let me go down. Paul, okay. Roy Salameh, would you like to speak? You're able to unmute yourself if you'd like to. No, Roy's there, but you can speak if you'd like to. If you don't, it's okay too. No. Okay, I'm not hearing from him. The rest are all Caltrans, so I will just, Doug, do you have anybody specific from Caltrans? I know we have like half a dozen people, or I just can go down the line, and not sure if there's anybody you've been leading.
I think unless somebody from Caltrans wants to speak up, I would just say when questions come up, we'll refer to them, and the appropriate Caltrans technical, technical person can respond.
Okay, just because they can't raise their hand right now, I just didn't know if there's anybody that wanted to, yeah, if there's anybody that's a lead that you've been speaking with. Kelly or?
Their, their intent was to be mostly responsive to questions coming up in the hearing.
Okay. I'm gonna, Kelly, I just gave you permission. I don't know if you know of anyone that wanted to have any clarifying or anything that, I don't, just trying to help out. We can't raise our hands at the moment, so.
Yeah, I think you got the right person, so thank you. My name is Kelly Ma, and my role in the project is the project manager for Caltrans, so I will try to answer all these questions that we receive. I took a tally of them, but first of all, before I get into the questions, I'd like to thank the City of Half Moon Bay Planning Commissioners, as well as the public for reviewing this project, and Doug as well for doing the presentation, and the City of Half Moon Bay team for coordinating with us and putting together the staff report. As you know, this is a large project on the coast. It's roughly $34 million, this multi-asset roadway rehab maintenance project, and it's a big investment, and it's part of our State Highway Operations Protection Program. It's our SHOP project, and it's our Fix-It-First program, that's what we call it, for repair and maintenance of our assets. And again, I do have my project development team on the line as well to support and answer any questions. I'll let you know, Bridget, if I need you to unmute any of them.
That, that'd be great.
So first of all, we got the comment from Hazel regarding the project limits of the project. I wanted to kind of just go into a little bit of background of how Caltrans projects are developed, and then so, Caltrans projects are programmed with specific funds, so this is actually a rehab project fund and also a state highway operations maintenance improvement project. So there is a programming capacity that we're limited to, and the project limits are based off the funding available at specific times in the future, and those are actually approved by the California Transportation Commission, that's CTC, at the very beginning of the project, project initiation. And so the project limits are identified in a 10-year highway repair program as well as programmed in a four-year cycle. But, you know, this doesn't preclude any future projects from studying other roadway segments. I did hear the specific segments that the public was talking about, and I've noted that. And then we did have a question regarding the bike lanes and the concern of parking at Surfers Beach. I believe this would be outside the City of Half Moon Bay LCP, but just to provide some background about this, we were at the San Mateo Planning Commission meeting last month, and we have coordinated with them as well as other stakeholders for San Mateo County's Connect the Coast Side. Granada Community Service District has also a proposed Granada Community Park that would be adding parking in that area. We coordinated with Midcoast Community Council, Coastal Commission, and community members. Our project would be installing Class II bike lanes in that area on both sides, so northbound and southbound, and they would be six-feet bike lanes with two-feet buffer, and that would take the place of the shoulder, and there would be no parking bike lane signs that would be added in that vicinity. That's mainly for the safety of the bikers. We want to make sure, you know, the bikers can continuously bike from the project limits of this project. And then we also had a question from Mike regarding the erosion on the trail at Surfers Beach. That is actually a maintenance emergency director order project right now, so that trail will be replaced. It's separate from this project, but there are also studies ongoing that are not associated with this project, but they are studying, you know, sea level rise and erosion at that area. And Bridget, those are the questions I had from the public that I wanted to respond to.
Okay. I'll turn it back to the chair if you, I don't know.
Okay, would any of my fellow commissioners like to ask clarifying questions?
I'll, I'll start with a rudimentary question. Where does the city of Half Moon Bay's border end? Is it the middle of Highway 1? I'm under the impression that the Beach House and Sam's in their entirety fall within the city of Half Moon Bay. Certainly from a tax perspective, they're two of our largest and most important businesses.
You're looking at me? I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. This is the first time I've been, encountered that question, so hopefully Maz has an answer.
Good evening, everyone. Maz Bozoginia, Public Works Director and City Engineer. Yes, the, the limit lines for the city is really convoluted in this location. Surfers, so essentially in the past, prior to, to existing erosion that has occurred, the city limits actually hugged the coastal area and reached up into the surrounding pocket of the Beach House and the Sam's Chowder House properties. So essentially, my understanding is that the limits came from that side and not from Highway 1, and so essentially at Medio, moving north, that portion of Highway 1 then becomes part of the San Mateo County jurisdiction.
Let me restate it. Highway 1 from Medio, which is where the city limits sort of end, and I say sort of, but, but effectively, if you live in a home on the south of Medio, you're in Half Moon Bay, and if you live in a home north of Medio, you're in the county.
On, on the east side of Highway 1. On the west side of Highway 1, it still is the, in the city of Half Moon Bay until Marada. Then it becomes.
Got it.
Yeah. It is really not an easy.
Okay, so, so that's actually, I know Marada well. So you're saying the border sits out, to your knowledge, the border sits outside of the Caltrans right-of-way but includes the Beach House and Sam's Chowder, but, but we don't have definitive information on that this evening?
That, based on the maps and the right-of-way records that I've looked at, that's my understanding.
Okay, based on actual.
Yes, actual.
Data. Very good. Then it's not just to your knowledge, it's actual evidence. Very good. I have a clarifying question for Caltrans. When, you know, this impacts two major businesses, it also impacts our community outside of the city limits, but I, I count using Google Maps and math, kind of estimating things using my pen as I'm going through here, about 200 parking spots that are going to be removed. Has a trial, has a study been done, an actual count of how many parking spots are going to be impacted, and is there a one-for-one replacement that's clearly been defined as part of this project? Not our part of the project, but the two projects together, because they are related, and I think under SEQA, there's some, some rules around projects that are tied together. So I'd like to understand if a one-for-one replacement study has been done for the parking.
She can unmute. Kelly, you wanted her to? Yeah, she can unmute. Yeah, sorry, I left you with permissions, so you can unmute. Go ahead.
Great, thank you, Bridget. So I want to go over, I guess, the informal parking in that area. That area is going to incorporate the Class II bike lanes. Again, I mentioned the no parking signs there. We have looked into, I guess, the informal parking there. I say informal because there are, or previously were no parking signs there, and what we concluded at the end of this project is that we did look into the parking, the informal parking that would be removed, and we also assess the kind of dirt lot that's over there as well, that some people park at. What we conclude is we are not touching that dirt lot, but for the safety of bike and ped within that vicinity, it would not be safe to have the cars parked there because of the bike lane that we are adding. So I just wanted to add that. And also, I want to add that there is a project, Granada Community Service District, that's proposing the Granada Community Park. They will be applying for a Caltrans encroachment permit for their projects within the vicinity, and we would be coordinating with them separately regarding being within that area.
So to clarify, you, you have a separate but foreseeable project that could potentially add parking, but you haven't actually done account of the number of parking spots that are in current use, have been in current use. We've received evidence today that the parking has been inactive for at least 45 years. Caltrans has provided no evidence to the contrary, and you don't have a plan to actually replace the parking?
We have coordinating with the stakeholders on that parking. It's been a big coordination effort with San Mateo County specifically for Connect the Coast Side, and also, as mentioned, the Granada Community Park and Midcoast Community Council and Coastal Commission. So we've already discussed the parking within that area and have, I guess, future coordination with other. and have, I guess, future coordination with other projects for added parking there.
I understand, but I've had many discussions with Caltrans over the years, and usually they're very one-sided. And just because we've discussed it, doesn't mean there's an actual plan. So right now, what I've heard is you haven't done account, you have no evidence to the contrary that there's approximately 200 parking spots that are going to be removed, and there's no defined plan as part of the project before us that addresses the parking there or informal parking in other parts of the community that are going to be addressed. And that's okay, I just want to make sure that I have the facts correct.
You know, we've done the same thing that you've done as well. We counted the cars that are within that area that park in there. I don't think it's 200, roughly, I believe 60 or less. And that is, I guess, the parking there would be removed because of the bike lane. And there are plans in the future to coordinate for future parking within that area at Surfers Beach with San Mateo County.
Do we have a map of the area? I just counted at least 50 parking spots, and I stopped halfway up the road, and I only did one side. So you're planning to put bike lanes on both sides of the road, is that correct?
Correct. The west side is already painted red.
I...
Curves.
Okay. But people are parking there today.
Right, and that's, that would be going to enforce more.
Okay, but you're removing, okay. Very good, thank you. I have another, just two other questions. I noted that you added two new sidewalks, you're also adding bike lanes. Those aren't maintenance, those are new construction items, is that correct?
The sidewalks are connecting to the bus stops, we coordinated with Samtrans on that.
But that's new construction, correct? It's not maintenance?
It would be, I guess, like coordinating with Samtrans, it is new sidewalks or connecting sidewalks.
Is Caltrans paying for the sidewalks, or is Samtrans paying for the sidewalks?
We are paying for the sidewalks.
I noticed that you made the argument that only maintenance is allowed on this project for the crosswalks on the north side of Kelly that are proposed by many members of the community, and the crosswalk proposed on Poplar Street. More than 10 years ago, improvements were made by Caltrans to Poplar Street, including a traffic light and grading changes. And it's been pretty horrible. And there've been many comments I've made, and I've heard comments from other people about both of those intersections. I'm disappointed, and I'm wondering, is there any way that Caltrans could reevaluate a crosswalk or some other configuration as part of this project? Maybe coordinate with Samtrans, maybe coordinate with the way the bikes and the buses move to look at this as a maintenance project as opposed to new construction. And the reason why I bring this up is, as long as I've lived in this community, which is approaching 17 years, I've heard and seen horrible things at both of those intersections, and Caltrans has done nothing to address it, and this is a perfect opportunity. I think Paul Nagenglass called this a generational observation. And I would encourage you guys to work with Maz in the City Engineers' Office to find a way to look at improvements that could be made to classify this as maintenance, because it's an obvious area greatly in need of improvement, and I just walked both of those intersections today. That's all I have for now.
Wow, there's so much to unpack. So, yeah, personally, I would say even the Poplar intersection is much more dangerous even than the Kelly Street one. And I'm surprised that that was also just sort of dismissed as just not able to be addressed because it's not maintenance. It seems like this is a really good opportunity to coordinate with the city to develop Redondo Beach Road and Poplar in particular, and Kelly. So I had another question, since this is clarifying questions. I don't really understand about the bike lanes. So, you know, I didn't, in the whole presentation, I didn't really see anything about how wide they are and what makes them safe. And, you know, so personally, I've seen people, you know, a lot of people, when they're driving on, you know, 60, 70 miles an hour on Highway 1, and come across that light, come upon that light all of a sudden at Frenchman's Creek, they stop suddenly, the cars behind them swerve into the lane to avoid a crash, and those shoulders are really important. I also know that the reason the light was put in at Frenchman's Creek was that two people were killed riding their bikes. And cars, you know, you reach for the radio, or you reach for something, or you're on the phone, or whatever, and you drift. And people, I mean, if I see bike lanes, not just on the straightaway, but all those curves, like the, and it's in addition to bike lanes that we already have. And so it's sending a mixed message to which lane do you ride in? Do you ride along the road? And the road seems really dangerous to me everywhere, from outside of city limits to the north, all the way to the south. That's the reason we were having those bike lanes off to the side, because it's so dangerous. You know, maybe the speed limit is 45, but that's not how fast people go. And it's, so anyway, I didn't see that explained very clearly. I didn't see, you know, what the safety measures are that are in place. So maybe you could explain.
Or show us.
I'll take a stab at it, and then I think Caltrans can jump in. Their basic plan is you have a 12-foot-wide traffic lane. And then, as you're moving towards the side of the road, there's a two-foot buffer, and then a striped bicycle lane, which would be essentially on where the paved shoulder is now, give or take a foot or two. And that's pretty much it. Now, I do want to stress that none of this replaces the city projects that have been approved here. Highway 1 North, where we're building a Class 1 path, which is off of the highway from Main Street up to, well, spindrift, but it's designed, we don't have, you know, a continuous path up the east side, but you can get to where we're putting in the new traffic light at Terrace, safely get to the other side, and then go north, and then there's a traffic signal at Frenchman's, and then there's more trails. We also have the east side trail, which is a short section that would connect to the new trail that the county has built coming down the east side of the highway. And Maz can connect, but I think the city has found some funding to build another piece over there. So it's an interesting question. We're getting close to having two separate, I mean, you can make a choice, do you want to live dangerously or safely? What the logic for having both is, I'm not in charge of those decisions.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, I just wanted to mention, as far as the city's projects and what we've been working on. Obviously, the Highway 1 North project for Main Street's spindrift is still something that's moving forward. We've been coordinating that project with Caltrans as part of this multi-asset improvement project. And so we're coordinating closely to make sure that, you know, the contractors can work on each project and not have overlap. So there's been a lot of coordination going on. And yes, it does not preclude from the other work that we're doing. We have some grant funding encumbered through congressional earmarks, one for the Frenchman's Creek crossing and the extension of the Class 1 east side parallel trail from the future spindrift trail to just north of Frenchman's Creek. We also have some congressional funding to look at bike lanes on the south side of town that we're working on encumbering. And we actually also received a grant from the San Mateo County Transportation Agency, SMCTA, for a corridor study for Highway 1. And the limits of that study are from 92 on the north side all the way to the southern city limits. So that purpose of the study is to look at right-of-way delineations and look at the needed improvements such as Class 1 facilities, crossings, bus stops, anything of that nature. That'll be getting started in the later part of this year, and with, the hope is that, you know, we're going to do a lot of community outreach to really understand what the community and the folks that either live or travel through these corridors have an opportunity to comment on that. And ultimately, what that corridor study would do is to provide a blueprint for future improvements, and then we can work with Caltrans in looking at construction funding and really get those improvements underway.
So, just to be clear, I know it sounds kind of snarky, but just I want to know, which is better, Class 1 or Class 2?
I think, I mean, Caltrans can definitely speak to this as well, but my understanding is that there are, it depends on the user. So there's definitely going to be some folks that are road bikers and are comfortable with riding next to traffic, and so the Class 2 will provide that continuous connectivity immediately. The Class 1s obviously are buffered, there's a little bit more separation, and so I see that more as a multi-use for walking and biking, more recreational. So it really depends on the user and their preference. And I think Caltrans, that's what I've heard from them as well, and I think they can definitely respond if they have anything else to add on that piece.
Thank you, so they're just different? Okay, thank you. I mean, I do, I have had, I have heard the complaints about our bike trails, that they kind of meander, and so there's no direct way to get anywhere. And so I imagine, I'm assuming that that's what this is about. So I just didn't see anything about what they look like or safety issues in the report.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to, I'd like to expand on Commissioner Gorn's question before the Caltrans people answer it, because I had many of the same concerns. And I think it's, I think it's great, the progress that our city has made in dedicated bike ped trails in the last few years, and the progress that Maz is outlining for the near future is terrific. So I'm puzzled at why it's a logical use of money to widen Highway 1 by 16 feet from the city limits in the north to nearly the south, why that's economically smart, and is that really the, if safety is your goal? And I expect that somebody in Caltrans would tell me that certainly it's always going to be safer when you have the bike lanes on the side of the highway. But I wonder if it isn't a better alternative to push those folks onto the detached and dedicated paths, especially when we consider the addition of impermeable pavement that is represented there and the potential impact on our water courses. So I'd like to hear Caltrans' view on why the bike paths do make sense.
Yes, thanks for your comments. I think I want to clarify first...
Excuse me, can I ask a question, since we're talking about the bike lanes? And then we will probably have definitely more questions. I would like to add in, I don't understand how the no parking signs will prevent visitors from parking in areas that they've been parking in for the last 20, 30 years. That's the one question I have about the new bike lanes that are going to be built along the highway on both sides, especially near Surfers Beach or by Sam's and the Beach House. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'll try to respond to all that. I first want to clarify that there is no widening on this project, that was mentioned earlier. So regarding the bike lanes, they would be replacing the shoulder, the current shoulder. The bike lanes would be six feet with a two-feet buffer. They'd be green, and also, there would be bike symbols on the ground. So that will notate that bicyclists will be utilizing that shoulder. Regarding the no parking, that is going to be for the shoulder as well. So you will see those stripings on the ground, and you will know that, you know, you should not be parking there. Hopefully, that clarifies the question.
Can I ask you just, are you also, like, I could see that bike lanes may sort of visually help people, you know, like, to slow down because they know it's a populated area. Are you talking about lowering the speed limit?
The speed limit is set as it is right now. Of course, after the project is built, there's always a speed study that could occur, and that will assess the speed limit within the area.
Sorry, I just had one more sort of clarifying question, which is your question about when to do the work. So I wanted to know how, I guess, how loud and how bright are we talking about? Like, just so I understand before we get into it.
Most, or Caltrans probably has data they can cite, but these kinds of projects tend to be more of a dull background kind of roar. It's not like somebody's pile-driving or running a skill saw right next to your bedroom window. It's, there's some phases when they're grinding the asphalt and when the, you know, trucks show up and start pouring. But in general, it's, goes on long enough, you sort of get used to the sound. Caltrans can probably give you some more info on actual decibels and that sort of thing. The lighting would be, where they're working at that time, they're fairly low-profile, they're portable lights that would be set up where the workers are, typically lower than, you know, like what you might see with a 60 or 70-foot-tall, you know, freeway light. But Caltrans could fill in some blanks there.
Well, so that'd be great, like some data or whatever. But also, just to be clear, we're not talking about, you know, it's a year-long project. We're not talking about a year-long construction near houses. So that's also, you know, looking for direction about how long would it be in front of places, you know?
I think, one question is, traffic on the whole coast side is going to be disrupted somewhere for over a year. As far as actual noise near your house, that would be a much shorter timeframe.
As long as it's near his house for more time than mine, I'm okay with that. Would the, just to put it in perspective, is the lighting consistent with what we would have seen on Highway 92 in the evening hours when we're driving along there? They've had a lot of, Caltrans has had a lot of maintenance there, it would be consistent with what we saw there?
I'll let Caltrans answer that one.
I can start the answer, and I may send it to my environmental team as well that looks into the lighting decibels. So first, I want to go into when construction is. Construction would be at the beginning... Construction would be at the beginning of 2025, and our working days for this project would be 300 working days. So it's about a year going into, a little bit, a couple months into more than a year. And regarding, you know, night work, day work, we want to work closely with City of Halfmoon Bay on that. We understand there are limitations along the coast, there are different constraints as well. We want to work with City of Halfmoon Bay on that. Of course, we don't want to introduce any traffic on Highway One. You have commuters, and you have tourists, and you have a lot of different travelers on Highway One. And we want to make sure we have in our specs, our special provisions within our specs for lane closure hours that we would include for this project. The majority of it would be night work slash AM work. But again, we would work on a traffic management plan with the City of Halfmoon Bay. And regarding construction, when we're in construction, there would be roughly a 20 miles per hour speed reduction, and also we would work in about 1,000-feet segments. And we would just, with coordination with City of Halfmoon Bay, because they do have their north-of Main Street project, we're going to coordinate with them on that. But we would be working, you know, either from south to north or north to south, and working within those 1,000-feet segments. The project is roughly 7.3 miles along the coast. And then I did want to turn it over to our environmental team to add more information about the noise and the lights. That would be Dylan Linebacker to unmute.
Thank you.
And maybe they could address how long it takes to repair the road in those 1,000-foot segments, so that we understand. We're just trying to get an idea of what will happen.
Go ahead, Dylan, you're unmuted.
Yeah, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, so I'll address first, I think there's a question about what would lighting impacts be, is that correct?
Sure.
So the project is proposing no new lighting, no new permanent lighting along the project. So the only lighting would be temporary during construction. The measures that are proposed by the project include, they would limit all construction lighting to within the area of work, and use directional lighting and shielding and other measures as required to avoid light trespassing into residential areas. So we anticipate pretty minimal, if any, light impacts on nearby sensitive receptors.
So similar to what has been happening on Highway 92?
I don't work on that project, but I would guess, yeah, that's a standard measure for all Caltrans projects.
Yeah, we have similar guidelines, so yes.
And then the other question was in regard to noise at night, is that correct?
Yeah, do you have an idea about decibel level?
Yeah, so the standard spec for Caltrans and their requirement for, this is again a standard requirement for all their projects, is a maximum of 86 decibel A weighted within 50 feet of the noise generating source. That would be maximum noise level during night work.
What does that equate to?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
How loud is that?
It's loud, yeah. I mean, it's construction activity, right? So it's repaving equipment out there, grinding the road, repaving the road. Within 50 feet, that would be pretty loud. But 50 feet is very close, so most people won't be 50 feet. As sound travels through the air, it has an exponential drop-off. I don't have the numbers in front of me as far as, you know, what would that be at 100 or 200 feet? But it does exponentially reduce in noise level as the sound travels.
Okay, thank you.
I think there was a question regarding, you know, how long would it take? So I had mentioned the 1,000-feet segments, that would be night closure, and we would cold plane and overlays, so rehab the roadway within 1,000-feet increments, and then reopen back to original condition in the morning.
So you're saying 1,000 feet would be done in a day?
In a night, yes, correct.
In one night?
Uh huh.
Okay, that's very helpful.
Have we looked at the, the decibels and compared this to the Halfmoon Bay noise ordinance?
I have not. We do have, in our noise element and our noise ordinance, specific decibels that are mostly focused on ongoing traffic noise from the highway. They map specific residential areas where that's a concern. I don't think it really gets into temporary construction noise levels. It does primarily limit it through hours of operation, that sort of thing. In a general sense, SEQA sometimes looks at if it's a 3 dB changeover, ambient conditions, that could be a significant increase. It depends on the background levels, which are generally pretty quiet.
If you're running a bulldozer, it makes a lot of noise, and I get you have a temporary project, and it sounds like somebody somewhere has done some kind of study. It'd be great to understand, if I'm a household near Highway One, how is this going to impact me? And if it's excessive, maybe baffling of some kind is, would be required, temporary fencing, I don't know. I mean, again, I see no evidence in front of me. It's, the question of noise has been raised, we have a noise ordinance, you know, it doesn't necessarily, it's unclear to me if it applies to this project or not. But, you know, it's there because we have a standard that our citizens expect us to operate towards. And for, if somebody's excessively close to Highway One, they're already, you know, I can think of a number of properties that could be impacted by this. It would be great if we could put some consideration into them and look at where does this sit? And it doesn't sound like we have that in front of us today.
I don't think so. That is something that we were going to incorporate into the temporary traffic management plan that we would, like I mentioned earlier, where we want some input, is there are some areas where night work probably wouldn't affect anybody. There are a few areas where I think it's, it may be not appropriate, and that's something we have to sort out. And again, I think we all know pretty much where the traffic bottlenecks are, certainly going north from Highway 92 all the way up to Princeton. South, it's a little bit less so, most of the time, and there are some residential areas that might be one area we could look at, is maybe do that in the day. But I think we, again, it would be good to have some data, not just our intuition as to where it works and doesn't.
I do want to add that public outreach is part of our traffic management plan, so that would also help notify the residents of upcoming construction.
If I may add, so yeah, the, and we do have a noise ordinance, and generally speaking, there is, the section has some regulations around construction projects specifically. And so if there are impacts, adverse impacts to having those noise-inducing activities during regular hours, it is permissible to allow it to happen during the evening hours. And the other pieces, you know, with the City of Half Moon Bay being involved in this traffic management plan, as well as, you know, they've actually invited us to their construction coordination meetings as well as when they start. And so, you know, part of that, part of our oversight can be looking at potential restrictions in certain locations, maybe that might be really close. So that's something we can certainly work with Caltrans and the community as we get closer, as we look at each specific segment as they move forward.
I have one more thing, but I'll wait till you guys circle.
Well, I would also just say, if it is, 1,000 feet is done in one night, then there's sort of a little less for us to decide, because there's not that many areas that are right next to housing on Highway One. I do find that one a little hard to believe, that it's 1,000 feet done in one night, because you go over the 7.3 miles, what is that, 30, 37 nights it would be done?
That's just for the paving, remember. That's, the night work and this work that they're talking about is a lot of the earthwork and preparation.
So is it, is it only 37 nights that there will be noise?
That, I can't speak to that, but it's not going to be for the 300 working days. It's not going to be for the entire.
No, I understand there's a lot of planning, like, but in terms of the paving itself, it's really only 37 days out of the year.
That's.
Because they do it 1,000 feet every time.
Yeah, that's closer to the reality, yeah.
So 37 times when there's a problem?
Maybe twice that if they're doing northbound and southbound separate.
I just want to add, there's four construction stages. So we would be, you know, working on the left side first, and then the right side, and then the median. So it's, it's a total of four construction stages that we have for the project, so times that by four.
So 1,000 feet, four times?
Right, we would be moving traffic to the left first, and then working on the right side. And then we would be moving traffic to the right side, and then working on the left side, and then working in the median for another stage. So ultimately.
So like 160 nights then? In the year? So like pretty much every other night? Is that kind of, just so we understand, is that what we're talking about?
Right, but there's additional work, such as the guardrails, the curb ramps, drainage, that would add to the working days of the project.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple questions. I have a question, this might be for Doug, although maybe Kelly could answer. Who's responsible to clean out the culverts, and how often are they supposed to be cleaned? I was sort of shocked when I saw that picture with that culvert filled up close to 75% it looked like. And so that's one question. And then I have a second question, and Kelly, maybe you could look at, it's a very technical question, but in the supplemental portion of the link that's on the town website, it's called supplemental, there's figure two, which is a, looks like a Google map over Spindrift, Spin Drift, I'm sorry, Spindrift. And there's two sidewalks proposed, and one of the sidewalks looks like it's in the middle of an island on the highway, and that's, it's adjacent to the coastal trail. Or the, anyway, it's not the coastal trail, it might be the Naomi Patridge Trail, but I don't understand the purpose of this sidewalk in the middle of a grassland. I mean, it, and that's, I guess it's page seven of 12 on figure two. So, but it, the problem, it's, it, so if you look at the map of this, on figure two, page seven, I'm wondering, you know, why the sidewalk is there, because there's no crosswalk across the highway at Spindrift. Yes, that'd be great. Oh, do you mean the picture of the map, or the picture? Oh, I took a picture of the site today too, but the map might be better.
I can answer the first question first, if someone is pulling that up.
Sure, sure, please do.
Okay. Regarding cleaning of the culverts, that, within Caltrans right-of-way, that is our Caltrans maintenance staff, separate from this project, but they clean the culverts, and they try to clean it as often as possible when there is such, I guess, debris is filling the culvert on and, and the ones on this project, the culverts that we are replacing for this project, we're replacing three 18-inch culverts. And again, since this is a maintenance project, we also are cleaning out those and replacing them in kind. But, you know, in the future, if there are any culverts that do need cleaning, you can always email us in our customer service requests, where we can go into that and clean it if it's, if it hasn't been already cleaned.
So there's not a regular maintenance schedule for the culvert cleaning?
They try to maintain that annually, but they try the best that they can with their resources.
Thank you.
I'd like to go back to the comments on water. I heard from city staff, Caltrans takes the position that what they're doing here would not alter drainage flows. In fact, you're clearing out three culverts that are pretty effectively blocked, and if, I'm not a biologist or geologist, but they kind of look like they're nice bioswales right now. They're slowing down the pace at which water goes through. You're going to clear those out in an area where we've just downstream issued two emergency CDPs because of drainage, where the coastal trail's falling apart, and where Seymour needed to have work done to shore up the landfill. I'm concerned that no evidence has been provided. I mean, surely you went to the state water board to talk about the project you were doing. It would be great if we could just see the documents on what you've studied and how you're looking at this. And there's no evidence to indicate that you're, you've actually looked at it, and you've planned this in a way that gives me confidence that we're not increasing erosion. And I understand that, you know, I did some on-the-fly math, you've got a three-and-a-half-mile stretch of highway. It's somewhere between 34 and 100 acres of land that Caltrans owns. You're increasing the impervious surface by, if I read the staff report correctly, 8,000 square feet. So, you know, less than two tenths of an acre. It doesn't sound like a lot. If done in the wrong place, it could be impactful. I'm not really worried about the increase in impervial surface, just based on percentages. I am a little concerned about clearing out the culverts and the impact it could happen. We do have, again, two emergency CDPs that have been issued downstream in that area because of massive erosion that's happened. And we've also got other work that's been happening along Seymour, because something, somewhere, changed the pattern of water in the last 25 years, and, you know, we're experiencing that. So I'm, I would love to see additional information on what, on something that's based in fact that's actually happened around the change in flows. If there was any evidence that's maybe been provided. If there was any evidence that's maybe been provided to another body, that would be great.
This is Kelly. First, I'd like to address the image that's on the screen, and maybe I'll provide it, provide the question regarding the hydraulics to our team. So the two areas that are highlighted in red or crossed in red, we have two bus connections. That's that southbound and northbound near Spindrift. Does that answer your question?
So is the bus stop right on the highway there for the bus stop, I mean, I'm sorry, the sidewalk that looks like it's in the middle of that island there?
Yeah, I think you could see how it indents a little bit, and that's a bus stop.
Okay, thank you.
And regarding the drainage features, I'm sure Dylan, you wanted to provide more information?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I can provide a little bit of clarification. So this project is proposing, within the Half Moon Bay jurisdiction, to maintain three existing 18-inch culverts, replace them in kind, and put flared-in sections on them. What's there are not bioswales. Bioswales are engineered biofiltration devices that help treat stormwater runoff. The ground there is just the, the ground that's existing. So I just wanted to clarify that, you know, characterizing just the side of the road as a bioswale isn't really, isn't really what we would consider a bioswale. I will mention though that the project is placing and installing four bios, biofiltration strips within the half, city of Half Moon Bay to address stormwater, and that was done in coordination with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. That will address the project's requirements under its NPDES permit that it has statewide, and it will meet the requirements of the waste discharge requirement that's going to be issued by the water board for the project. It meets and exceeds the requirement for stormwater treatment along the entire roadway here for this project.
Have you provided those documentations to city staff for those projects?
No, we're, we're still working with the water board for their WDR to be issued, but we'd be happy to share what they, what they issue, and if the permit for the CDP wants to point to the WDR that'll be issued by the water board, I think that would be absolutely acceptable and appropriate.
And, I mean, do you have any comment on the fact that, for whatever reasons, we've seen photographic evidence that two of the culverts are effectively blocked, one of them, at least 80% appears visually to be blocked, and you're now, you know, you're doing maintenance on it, maybe it should have been done before, but the fact that there's a small hole and you're replacing it with a big hole means more water can flow through. And the evidence we've seen is where we increase channels and culverts and ditches and we make them bigger upstream, they have impacts downstream. So do you, you know, is there anything we can do to mitigate the situation? Even, I don't need you guys to go off and do some water study, it'd be great if we could just, you're the guys who do this for a living, you could come to us and say, you know what, maybe we could do a little bit more here to just impede the rate at which water's coming out. I don't, I get that there's a bioswale, and, and again, I'm not a geologist, I'm not a hydrologist, I'm just here as a member of the public, and I'm asking due diligence questions because I have people here with pitchforks and torches a few weeks ago because their homes are getting flooded, and they're getting washed away, and they're upset. And I just want to make sure that as a member of, you know, the oversight body here, we're doing the right thing. And so I just, is there a way for you to look at this in a way that's, hey, we're not just punching a bigger hole and replacing something that should have been taken care of before, but we're proactively managing this a little bit more effectively than we've done? I would love to see evidence of that.
Yeah, I think that within the, the designs that were included with the CDP application, it shows the flared-in sections with some rock at the end of them. What's existing out there, as you saw in that photo, is just a culverted pipe that ends into dirt. The flared-in section will dissipate that energy as it comes out of and into that pipe, that'll reduce the ability for those, those facilities to sediment in, like you're seeing there, and also will improve water quality by reducing erosion at the outfall during storm events when those, there's heavier flows going through those. So that is, that's the, the design intent for those, and they're, they are effective in improving water quality during stormwater events and while water's running through those. Also mentioned that the, you know, the facilities that are being maintained here, these culverts specifically are meant to address stormwater during storm events to protect the road from flooding, and also to, to allow water to convey so it doesn't flood outside of the transportation facility and into adjacent properties. So maintaining that waterway connection between one side of the road and the other actually does benefit residents nearby because it keeps that water moving, so it's not flooding on their property or intruding into the groundwater tables there and causing, you know, them to go have to deal with a French train or a sump, sump pump or something like that, right? So the intent really is to provide that maintenance and even address some of those concerns that I, that I hear you and I really sympathize with. You know, I, I live in a, in a house that is at a low point in the water table, and I understand the troubles that come with that. As the climate changes and we start to see more and more effects of heavy downpours, you know, these, these are real things. And, you know, maintaining the traffic infrastructure and facility here is the Caltrans priority to make sure that the roadway is safe and is not flooding.
Are you increasing the flow of water and the velocity of the water coming out, or are you?
No, it's, it's, we're not upsizing the culverts, they're the same size.
But at the end of the project, you currently have a state, status where it's partially blocked, and one might be completely blocked. Are you changing the amount of energy that's coming out of here? I mean, is it, should it, should it be neutral at the end of the project? I mean, help me understand, is this twice as much velocity that it's going to be coming out, 50% or roughly the same, based on an engineering standard?
Well, I'm, I'll have to turn to Kelly because I'm not a water engineer, so I can't really respond to the specific velocities for this. But in, in general, you know, the intent here is to maintain existing facilities in kind, so if water conveyance at the end of this project should be what it was initially designed to be when it was installed in the first place.
Can I ask one more question about the culvert? Did you say you were going to add energy dissipators where the water comes out of the culvert? I don't know if I, you did say you were going to add that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I've, I've got a drawing up that actually shows those now, if, if that helps.
the project will regrade and unline the ditches to maintain the original flow pattern. And again, we are adding those rock slope protections that would be dissipating outfall energy, also improving water quality by reducing the turbidity. And also, the drainage ditch would be excavated approximately one foot in depth and also reseeded with a native plant seed mix. So that's the work within the drainage system. The velocity, velocity would be roughly the same.
Any more questions? Okay, who would like to start with deliberation?
Can you just officially close comment? I don't know if we did earlier, did we officially close?
Did we? I don't think we did.
Yeah, we just want to.
Oh, sure, all right. We will officially close public comment.
All right, I think this is an important project. A lot of people are complaining about Highway One. I'm not super worried about adding bike lanes per se, and I see the benefit of having bike lanes dedicated for people who are comfortable biking next to cars. And I can attest to the fact that even when, even when we're sharing the road and the police are there to help during a triathlon, you can almost get creamed by cars. So it'd be great to have something for the road, serious road bikers who use it for commuting and for recreation. I don't see a big problem with having a second set of Class 1 trails, I mean, I think it makes sense. I am concerned about the removal of parking and the fact that no real thought has been put into it as it pertains to this project in terms of replacement. It's the only way I can describe it, it's, there's just, we're reducing coastal access, it's really clear to me. It impacts two major businesses in Half Moon Bay, it impacts real property owners in the area, and, you know, I, I think it's, it's an area of concern that I have. I'm concerned that there is, whenever we do these types of projects, we have a potential to change the way water works, and so, look, if you're here and you've done the study and you're coming to me and saying, look, we've, we've done the water study, we've looked at this carefully, great. I've heard things before, it'd be great if we could add some mitigation and monitoring conditions so that we can monitor the outflow as a result of these projects and not just take people's word for it, but I would look at attaching a condition of approval to these areas to just make sure that we're not increasing flooding, increasing erosion, especially downstream where we've had two CDPs. I think that's a practical way to address it, and if there is an issue, then, you know, I'd, I'd, you know, look to city to figure out what the appropriate language from a mitigation perspective is if it does in fact impact. Would love to see, there was a proposal made by Caltrans to provide documentation to the city for the state water board, so it'd be great to just have all the documentation provided as a condition of approval so that the city knows what they're operating in and they can do their due diligence. And it'd be great if we could get draft versions of that documentation provided to city staff so they can get ahead of things. It's, it's helpful for all of us that our professionals can work closely with other professionals and coordinate sooner rather than, you know, after the fact and just hope for the best. Those are the three, three, three areas of concern. I, I, I don't buy that you can't do something with Kelly today, I don't buy that you can't do something with Poplar today. I would love, I'm glad to, I'm heartened by the fact that the city is doing what it can to do other projects in the next year or two, or hopefully soon, but, you know, there's no clear date on that. And so it's really concerning that we have these projects, and the biggest issues raised by the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, members of the biking community who've provided comments, you know, my personal experience, they're not being addressed, and there's no imminent plan to address them, and this seems like a perfect opportunity to do it. And it, if you can work on Cal, work with SAM Trans to put in sidewalks in a couple of locations so that the buses are accessible, it seems like you could put some creative thought into something to do around these intersections. They're dangerous, they're unsafe, they're poorly designed. People cannot see from one side of Poplar to the other side of Poplar, and I've seen people, neighbors, come at the speed limit over the top of the crest and not see me or other people who are in the middle, in the middle of the road or near the road because there's no place to cross safely, maybe you're chasing a pet, maybe you've got a kid on a bike, maybe something's happening. It's not a safe intersection. And so Caltrans needs to take responsibility, and would love to see them come back with a plan to address it. And by the way, on Poplar, the city has an imminent project to put sidewalks in. It's actually, they're breaking ground in the next two weeks to put sidewalks in, so really disappointed in what I'm hearing from, from Caltrans, would love to see a way to address that.
So there were a few things that were kind of, that are still open to, like, from what I understand. And one is the, is the stormwater drainage. You know, I know that it's, you know, all Caltrans is doing is, is clearing out the, the culverts that need to be cleared out, so I get that. But I also get, I've been over on, what, Grove Street after the rain, during the rain, and, and it's a swamp, and, and that's one of these like limited culverts. And so I just think it needs to be addressed, and since there's no data on any of this, it's a little hard for us to make any kind of decision or recommendation or to say it complies because we don't have any data. Similar to the sound and light issue, which I know is like a big, like you're thinking about that now, we don't really have any basis to make any kind of decision. You know, the, the city has just as good an idea as we do about, you know, it's definitely going to be loud, and it's definitely going to be bright, and, and it's going to be over, what did I, what was it? 160, 160-something nights? And so, but, but we don't really have any kind of data or, or, like, we'd, we'd be making a decision out of thin air. So again, that's something that I would guess people would have something to say about, and that you might want to have some kind of public outreach to talk about that, because I think people would have an opinion. So then, there is also this data about the county line, about what is Half Moon Bay and what is the county, and again, there's like no data. It's like, okay, we think that it's this, you know, we kind of looked into it and we think it's this, but, you know, that wasn't the word from Caltrans, oh, I have to go back, I have to think, like, how far back? But I remember hearing from Caltrans that that, that the dividing line was in the middle of the highway. So if that's true, that kind of changes things. So we just need to know, can't really make a decision about it because we don't really And the coordination to fix that intersection at Poplar, I mean, I appreciate what's been sort of proposed to fix the Kelly issue with at least some crosswalks or something that's, that is a little more identifiable, and to deal with that right-hand turn lane, but there's nothing that's been done on Poplar that I could see, I haven't heard anything. And that seems like it's an opportunity that's missed in a, in kind of a big way. So then, I love bike lanes, really want the bike lanes, I can't really approve them not knowing what they look like or not knowing anything about them. You know, I, I get that they're six feet wide and that there's a two-foot buffer, and that there's some striping there to kind of hopefully protect people, but, you know, I'd just be trusting. So, and then the last one is the parking mitigation, which, you know, you are losing a lot of spots, and if you want to tell me it's 40 or 60, I do not believe you. So I know how many it is, I'm there, I see it all the time. Maybe it's 40 or 60 on a, on a weekday when there isn't like a lot, where it's like overcast and, you know, I don't know, no one wants to come out, but even then, I would. But even then, I would say it's more than that. On the weekend, it's packed. So those are all sort of like, to me, outstanding issues that need to be sort of discussed a little bit more. Where, anyway, that's, I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Well, those are all good comments. Yeah, I'm concerned about the loss of parking up around the Surfers Beach-Sam's Chowder House area. If I understand the discussion accurately, the idea is that we're going to lose all the parking on both sides of Highway One there. But there is a hope that Caltrans can work with El Granada and Midcoast Council up there to replace some of that parking with parking in the lots to the east of Highway One. It makes me worry and wonder if there isn't something more proactive that the city could do on the west side of Highway One to replace at least some fraction of those. I don't, I don't know what it is. And Doug, I gather that staff has not looked at that question. But I wish, I wish there was something that, rather than trusting to it being worked out on the county side of the highway, if there was something we could do. The question of draining, I think the monitoring would be a good condition. We'd have to start that fairly soon, though, so we had accurate before and after monitoring. If you start monitoring after the culverts have been cleaned out and replaced, you'll have that data point. But we won't know how that's different from today. The issue of the nighttime construction, it feels, I don't, I mean, obviously, there are people at Caltrans and probably city staff who have a lot more experience with this. But it feels to me as if the nighttime construction will impact fewer people than not doing it that way. I mean, you think of the, if you look at Google Maps Satellite View, you see maybe some dozens of houses that are within a row or two of Highway One throughout Half Moon Bay. And that work being done in the day would impact hundreds or thousands of people in their vehicles. And lastly, I know it's not exactly the scope of this project, but that one feature at Kelly and Highway One, that so-called Pork Chop Island has worried me ever since it was created. Just this morning, I was driving north on Highway One and was about to turn right on Kelly. And there were a couple of kids who I presume were walking to Cunha School there. And I stopped for them and they waved me on because I think they were afraid to be in the crosswalk while there are any cars in sight. And I sympathized with them. So maybe, I don't know, maybe nothing can be done as part of this project. But that is, that's an outlier, you know? That just shouldn't be that way. And adding to the danger there, the foliage, the trees and bushes on that corner, I don't think it's so bad today. But oftentimes, they are so lush as to make the visibility of pedestrians traveling west on that sidewalk even worse than it is otherwise. So I wish I had some specific good ideas about doing something to relieve that loss of parking up there. It would be wonderful if somebody had a good idea.
So I concur with my fellow commissioners. And I am concerned about the lack of evidence for the hydrology studies. And I am also concerned about the safety issues on Kelly Avenue and Poplar. And I appreciate the work that was done to improve Kelly. But I do agree with you regarding the pork chop. I use that intersection frequently. And I also am concerned about the parking issues. I don't understand how no parking signs will stop people from parking in the bike lanes. So that is basically it. And I also think we need, if we're taking away parking spaces, we have to replace them. I mean, we just went through a project where we talked about that at length. So I don't see how we can get away from talking about that with this project. Does anyone else have comments?
Just to follow up, I do think with the sound and the light, I trust. Again, it's small, a big impact to relatively small number of people. And I trust that if city has, city staff have oversight, they'll work with due diligence with Caltrans to address that. I'm not, I mean, it's not a major concern that I have. I'm glad to hear. I'm heartened that we already have a plan to address it. I agree with Pork Chop Island. We need to get rid of it wherever it exists. It is really unsafe. And looking at the comments, you know, the former director, the former city engineer said this conversation's been going on for 20 years. And so I don't see this being removed in the next 20 years unless we clearly lay it out as a requirement. It's a maintenance issue as far as I'm concerned. I'm, you know, would love to see, I mean, mitigation happen. I mean, I don't need public money spent on lots of water studies. And, you know, if an engineering standard has been met, okay. But I would really lean into monitoring and mitigation if it's an issue because we just, we need to do this everywhere where we potentially impact water changes. It's an important thing for us to do.
Is that it with my fellow commissioners in terms? So one thing that we didn't bring up, that sometimes this is brought up after public hearings, is that we have four options. And Winner, correct me if I'm wrong about this. But we can approve the project, approve the CDP. We can approve it with modifications to the condition of approval. We could either send it back for further studies or we can deny it, as I understand. And so that's basically our options tonight. And I just wanted to put that out there before a motion is made. Thank you.
Could I direct a question to staff? And maybe it's a question for Caltrans. But is it nuts to consider that we could add a condition to mitigate the loss of parking on the west side of Highway One up there?
Couple of things. One, I'd be careful about using the word mitigate. I think we're using that kind of generically. And it has a really specific legal meaning under CEQA. And parking is an environmental impact. So I think if we're talking about a condition of approval, that's probably on the table. I do think it's a little bit complicated because the city doesn't have a lot of control over that. As Caltrans said, it's sort of illegal parking that people have been doing so long. It is what it is. I think we would have to, the condition could be for us to get back together with Caltrans, come up with some real numbers and a plan to deal with it and bring that back to you. But again, some of this would require probably some coordination with the county, other bodies. So it gets a little complex.
Yeah, I'm sorry for misusing mitigate. I should have said alleviate.
It's very common. Just in this case, since we're not the CEQA lead agency, we have to be, just have a clear record on that.
So if we attach a condition of approval that says we want to have a count of traffic, of parking done that's going to be impacted by this project and a replacement plan to be completed within, to be presented to us within some period of time. I don't know exactly how you'd do that. But would that even, is that a condition where, well, if you don't do this, then we revoke your CDP? Does that have standing? I mean, help me understand, like-
Winner may want to weigh in, but conditions of approval have to be enforceable. They have to be feasible and enforceable. And like I said, to the extent that much of this is on land the city has no control over, in my mind, it raises some questions of feasibility and enforceability if it's an after-the-fact requirement for the approval.
I understand, but we have a sequencing issue here, in my opinion. And I'm not a CEQA expert. But, you know, the evidence that's presented to me is there's two projects. I wasn't, you know, I saw the impact of parking. We've heard evidence that parking is going to be removed this evening. And there's two related projects. And so it seems like action needs to be taken to address it. For whatever reason, it didn't happen with San Mateo County. But we've had people who are government representatives for different bodies who are speaking on their own behalf, people who've been representatives of the Midcoast Community Council who've come here and said, "Hey, this got missed." And so, but there is an impact to businesses in Half Moon Bay that abut the area where the parking is going to be addressed. I don't know where we stand with this. It is a question of, is it enforceable? And put it over to Winner, maybe. It's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I have just a couple clarifying points. First, again, to Doug's point about this not being a CEQA issue in addition to the fact that the city is a responsible agency where the city's role is to consider the environmental documentation that Caltrans prepared. On top of that, parking isn't, is no longer, perhaps never was, a CEQA impact, environmental impact, parking. So I think the focus of the discussion should be on this coastal access issue and LCP policies. And that would be where we might have some room to fashion a condition of approval. And, you know, I think it might be worthwhile. I don't know what you think, Doug, and I know Caltrans is not physically here in the room with us, but maybe to confer with them on what might be a feasible way forward with the condition there before imposing something that we don't know how it's going to play out with their plans and the county plans. But I just wanted to shift the focus from CEQA onto the LCP because I think that's the more relevant discussion there. But again, in terms of whether conditions of approval are enforceable, it would be a matter of, you know, essentially code enforcement at that point if we have a condition and if it's not complied with.
So Maz has got to put himself in front of a bulldozer? I'm not quite sure how that works.
I wonder if, oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I think these, the conditions of approval are certainly, like, it's great to consider those. I can't imagine, like, most of these sort of issues, these concerns that we all raised over all this time are all based on trusting that Caltrans is going to, you know, monitor the water, the stormwater drainage and monitor the light and sound and make the bike paths safe and come up with some other coastal access. You know, that's, it's all kind of like, it's all, it all seems to be based around just trusting that it's going to be okay. So it's a little hard to issue an LCP based on that. But I just feel like if you answer some of those questions, if Caltrans can just answer some of those questions and come on back with a little bit of data, particularly on the coastal access, but also on some of the other many issues, the concerns that were raised, maybe we would revisit it.
Would it be productive to let staff confer with Caltrans for five or 10 minutes on the coastal access question?
Before they break, I just want to add, I mean, I find it difficult to find evidence for findings that we've addressed coastal access, water quality, erosion, and safety concerns under the LCP. I see a lack of evidence is where I stand at this point. And so it would be great to see evidence to Commissioner Goran's point. And maybe, maybe that doesn't have to happen this evening. But I'm concerned about a lack of evidence.
I mean, I also, like, everyone wants this project to go forward, obviously. Like, this is great that they're going to upgrade. One, it needs it. We're at F right now. We'll probably be at F after the upgrade. But it's really great that this is going forward. And I'm really happy about it. But to have, like, this is what we're supposed to do, is like, that's, there's just not enough data here to say, yeah, that's great. It all meets the LCP and coastal access issues.
Well, I'd liked it from Caltrans. I think it's a little bit difficult for us to confer since they're all on Zoom and I'm not exactly sure how to do this. A couple of thoughts come to mind. We were looking, if we sort of boil this down to Kelly Avenue, stormwater, and the parking issue. I'm, I hate to stop momentum, but I'm kind of leaning to maybe we need to continue it to a date certain and allow us to have a little more in-depth conversation with Caltrans. You may want to see how they feel about that. But if we could come back with some incremental improvements to Kelly Avenue, if we-
And Poplar.
Could come back with, for the stormwater, get some, clear up the numbers on how much new impermeable surface they're creating and put some numbers on it. Have their hydrologists do that. And then on these culverts that are silted in, again, they are showing some rock structures at the outfalls there. Monitoring gets a little bit difficult when you don't have a good baseline to start with. One scenario would be to sort of beef up these outfall structures to contain more water and do something like that based on sort of projected water flows coming through. That might be something we could look at. The parking, I think that's the difficult one because, like I said, we, we're not totally in control of that. And that's where I think we would probably have to get together with Caltrans and sort of quantify these spaces. There's, whose land are they even on? Who has authority over this? And is there a feasible plan to, you know, create some replacement parking? Again, on whose land? And, you know, I think that's the most complicated one in my mind.
Well, plus you'd be creating more impervious surface somewhere else. Like, great. But it's still an issue. It's a coastal access issue.
So I think we could come back with some pretty good answers for three of these issues. The parking, I think we're going to have to take a pretty deep dive to see if there's a way to make that work. If you want to reopen it for Caltrans, it might be good to hear from them now on their take on these scenarios.
And Poplar, I think, is what Commissioner Goran also mentioned.
I did, Poplar. And for that matter, let's talk about Redondo Beach, okay? But Poplar's the one for me. All right. the one for me. All right.
Well, maybe I can start, and then Dylan can add. He's on our environmental side working on the CDP application. So I just want to stress the importance of this project, too. It's investment to Highway One, roughly $34 million. And we have funding cycles for these projects as well. So to go to the June Coastal Trans, or, sorry, not Coastal California Transportation Commission and request funding, we do have to finish design, get all the environmental permits for this project to go to that June CTC meeting. And so if we do come back, that would potentially risk that. I just want to highlight that. And regarding Kelly and Poplar, I, we did include it in our response back to Paul, but we did appreciate, like, his comments. And we did respond as soon as possible with our comments. We wanted to state that one side of it is, we understand the safety concerns. We are trying to do as much as possible within our funding constraints to apply safety improvements within those areas. And so at Poplar, we have ADA improvements. And at Kelly Ave, we highlighted our additional safety improvements we are adding on this project. But also, just going back to the funding of the project, I want to highlight that this is the State Highway Operations and Protection Program funding. It's our SHOP funding, and there is criteria for that as well. And so the operational improvements, such as removing the right turn slip lane and full intersection reconfiguration, isn't funded by the SHOP program. That also includes adding additional crosswalks. Those all include operational improvements, which wouldn't be under the rehab SHOP funding. Again, that doesn't preclude from future projects or us working with the city on encroachment permit projects. We would definitely support working with the city on encroachment permit projects to resolve those issues. And Dylan, if there's anything else you want to add?
Sure. I think, I'd like to touch on the coastal access piece that's been brought up here, and speak about a few of the things the project is doing to improve and enhance coastal access. The first I'd like to address here is that the project is proposing to improve and enhance bus stops with SAM Trans. Those bus stops serve, you know, some of the lesser served community members that you have, and improve their ability to access the coast. Additionally, the project is improving existing trails for bike and pet users, and striping Highway One along the, the length of the project. Highway One is a very popular highway for bicycle users, and a lot of them access the coast by the highway. And this would provide better and safer coastal access when the project's complete. In regard to the parking and whether or not it's a coastal access issue, you know, this, this area has a lot of history, and it has a lot of opinions, and a lot of very strong opinions. And, you know, ones that, that are probably going to be playing out for, for, you know, beyond this project. Currently, this parking that's occurring there is de facto. It's viewed by the facility operator as parking that is being done in a, in an area that's already labeled as no parking. It's hard for us to see that as a loss of parking, because people are using an area that they're not supposed to be parking in already. So those current parking practices there at Surfers Beach, they're not safe. They're not encouraged by Caltrans. People are just parking at the side of the road. They're walking out in the middle of the road. So I'm, I'm struggling with the coastal access question about the parking that's been presented here and the way that the parking has been characterized as parking, right? So those are, those are my comments.
Thank you.
So, so if we do continue it to a date certain, it should be very soon, is what
When was the San Mateo County Planning Commission meeting on this item?
I believe it was about a month, but Caltrans could
More than 10 days?
Yeah.
So I, I heard what they said. I, I don't, haven't heard anything that really changes my position. I did read the comments. I read, you know, Paul Nagingas' letters and the responses to them. But, yeah, I, I haven't changed my position.
So I don't think we need to vote on anything, correct? Or do you want us to, to entertain a motion to continue the project to a date certain?
Yes.
Yes, that would be great.
Well, I wonder how, what period of time is, is best. I mean, obviously, it has to go quickly, but we need to give you enough time to have a meaningful discussion with
I concur on that. I'm not sure when Caltrans drop dead deadline is to get to their funding, you know, sources. I suppose there is a scenario where you continue it to the next meeting, and if we were not ready, maybe we just check in and continue to the next one. So we don't have to go through the whole noticing and that sort of thing.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the meet, this item to the next Planning Commission meeting, two weeks out.
April 9th.
April 9th.
Do I second?
I'll second that.
I, I want to say that I'll be absent from the next meeting, but that doesn't necessarily hold us back from it being a good idea.
Okay. Bridget, do we want to have a discussion on that motion, or are we done?
One other comment. To be honest, the, the last gentleman from Caltrans who spoke, the question of that parking, which, as he points out, is illegal and perhaps unsafe, does make me, you know, a little more understanding of what they want to do there. But I, I still would hope that we could at least have a discussion about any alleviation that could take place.
And I'm sympathetic to the argument that coastal access is improved by making bus stops ADA accessible, lower income individuals being able to access it. That particular location where they're putting the bus stops doesn't directly lead to the beach, though. It doesn't directly provide, it provides access to parts of the coast, but doesn't provide access to areas that are enjoyable, and it's not contiguous with any coastal access area that's ADA compliant. So if it was a bus stop and ADA improvements at Poplar Beach, I'd agree that it includes coastal access. So I think some thought needs to be put into the coastal access. And, and, yeah, I understand the argument, the feedback that was provided. It's not an argument. We're, we're trying to work here to get something done. This is an important project. And we just want to make sure the concerns are addressed because if the Coastal Commission decides to appeal our decision based on coastal access, you know, they could shut the whole project down. And we don't want that. We want this to go through.
Well, and they probably, you know, their hydrologist has the data, right, about runoff and drainage and stormwater that we don't really have. And maybe we can get some data on sounding lights. That would be nice. And, and where the, where the border is. Like, those are all things that are open questions. So it'd be nice to just get that information. It shouldn't take very long, right?
I think we can clarify some of these now. As far as jurisdiction at Surfers Beach, your interpretation previously stated is correct. At least, our understanding of your jurisdiction at the Surfers Beach location is that it runs down the middle of State Route One there. So that, I think, addresses that. But, you know, it's, it's your jurisdiction. If you have, you can inform us if you have a different understanding of it.
So we couldn't really hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, I think you were saying it runs down the middle of the road. Is that right?
At Surfers Beach, right? At that location, our understanding of your jurisdiction, based on the, the jurisdictional mapping that you and San Mateo County and the Coastal Commission have provided, is that that jurisdiction ends right there at the, it's right, runs right down the middle at Surfers Beach. So that would mean, on the northbound side of the road, that's San Mateo County, LCP. And on the southbound side of the road at Surfers Beach, that would be Half Moon Bay.
Okay. So it's not 200
I think the trail, somewhere Coastal Commission takes, takes jurisdiction there.
So it's not 200 parking spots, it's 100 parking spots? Because it's half, but
It's probably like five, because your, your area is all striped as red at Surfers Beach. There's no parking there.
Saturday afternoon, there were plenty of people parked there.
Well, people parked.
Regardless if it's illegal, it's been going on for 45 years. We've heard evidence to that this evening.
Understood, understood. No, I'm not, I'm not, I understand, like I said, this area is very complicated, and the practices have been going on there. They are what they are. And, and we know, you know, nobody's unaware of that. I'm just trying to convey the perspective here of a red striped road.
Thank you.
No parking. Right. And then the other question about impervious surfaces, it was brought up here. Within the city of Half Moon Bay, the project proposes 0.03 acres of new impervious surfaces. That's a little less than 1,500 square feet, of which we're proposing a substantial amount of stormwater treatment in those four biofiltration strips that are being, being implemented in Half Moon Bay. I, I hope those answered, and I had meant to address those earlier. I apologize for jumping back in here at the last moment. And thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, so do we want to vote on the motion?
Just, all those, do you want to, all those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
All those
Aye.
Oppose? No? Motion approved?
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to the Director's Report.
Thank you. Steve McCarry is interim Community Development Director. I have two, two announcements, in a sense. One is, one is related to the Planning Commission minutes, just reminding and informing the public as well that with the taking of minutes, the minutes will be, will be taken as action minutes from this meeting forward. And the video will take the place of detailed minutes. And that's per the Planning Commission bylaws adopted by the council. The other item I have is actually more of an announcement. It's just something to do with affordable housing for Spanish-speaking residents. We are working on a workshop, putting together a workshop that will be held on April 11th. I'll give you the details here, for the sake of the public. It'll be 6:30 to 8:30 here at the Ted Adcock Community Center. And it's going to be covering affordable housing issues such as tenant protections, rent control, housing projects in the city. Our staff will be hosting that. And that will be posted to our social media outlets and the website tomorrow. So you're hearing that for the first time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any Planning Commissioner reports? Okay, with that, would someone like to make a, a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second it.
Yes. Thank you. That concludes our meeting.